Hi, Tim, I can, I can see you. Did you want to test your, your audio?
Can you hear me okay?
Yep, I can. All right, you can stay disappeared until your item is up.
I'm here normally. Can you hear me, Todd?
Yep.
Cool, thanks.
I'm just gonna switch over to the intro screen. Kristen, what screen do you see? Is it, is it the full screen for the board meeting, or is it like my, my PowerPoint? You're muted. Kristen, you're muted.
Todd, we see the PowerPoint.
You see my application or the actual, just the presentation?
Your application, not just the presentation.
Oh, that's weird.
Hey, Todd, Kristen just reached out to me. Is, did she, did you let her in?
Yes.
Okay, I'm here. Thanks, Chris.
Yep.
Not sure what's going on with my computer today.
That's okay. I can't see any of the board members either right now. So I'm trying to, oh, there, there's Nyla. I see Nyla. I see Phil. I see Kristen.
Yep, Aaron, Aaron's here.
I see Lisa. There's Aaron.
Okay, I'm here. I'm just readjusting because my computer's dying. I have to plug it in, but I'm here.
Perfect.
And there's Gary. Alright, so Chris, I think I'm ready to go whenever you say go.
Alright, so let's, when you say go, you mean start the video or start the meeting?
No, I'm, I'm already recording. We're already, as soon as you tell me to get going, I'll go through the slides.
Okay, then I'm gonna call our village board meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Well, let me start with just a few instructions, Chris, for folks.
Go ahead.
Yeah, so do you still see my PowerPoint?
Yes.
Okay, good. So for those attending from the public side of things, welcome. You're gonna be automatically muted, but I, when there's opportunity for public speaking, I can unmute those as the host of the meeting. If there is a public comments section, whether for items either on or off the agenda, attendees have a two-minute time limit for those comments. And when that item comes in the agenda, click the raise hand button, or if you're on phone, you can press star nine and I'll be able to see those hands and they'll let folks in. There is a closed session this evening. So the way that will work is the meeting, meeting will remain active while the board member is essentially leave to go to a different Zoom meeting, then they will come back after closed session concludes. You'll have, this screen will be up on this broadcast, on the Zoom broadcast, while the board is in a different Zoom meeting for the closed session. So for the board members and then our presenters, try to stay muted as much as you can. Village Board, of course, keep your visual on, but other participants, keep your cameras off when you're not participating. And when the board discussion does occur, President Zellner will call upon board members to raise, physically raise your hand like this and wave, then he'll, he'll pick on you to comment. And then all votes, though, will still be taken by roll call. So with that, I'll turn it over to Caitlin for the role.
Nyla Frye? Here. Gary Hertzberg?
Here.
Erin Moran?
Here.
Phil Brandon? Kristen Rungy?
Here.
Phil Williams?
Here.
Chris Zellner?
Here. Okay, first thing we have is confirmation of open meeting compliance, public postings, official notices, online availability. Caitlin?
I can confirm that the draft agenda was published in the Wannakee Tribune on December 3rd. The final agenda was posted at all three village posting locations on December 3rd, and the final agenda and pack were made available online on December 3rd.
Thank you. Next, we have our consent agenda. Would anybody like anything pulled, or I'd look for a motion?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Motion by Kristen Rungy to approve the consent agenda. Do we have second, second for Nyla Frye? Any other comments? Seeing none, roll call vote, please, Caitlin.
Nyla Frye?
Yes.
Kristen Rungy?
Yes.
Chris Zellner?
Yes.
Phil Williams?
Yes.
Erin Moran?
Yes.
Gary Hertzberg?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, next we have public comment. Is there anybody here who would like to make a public comment on any item, whether it's on or off the agenda? Please raise your hand if you'd like to, and Todd will bring you in.
Okay, so I've got my eyes on the attendee section. Please click the raise hand button if you'd like to make any public comments. No one's jumping at it, Chris.
Okay, then we will move on. Actually, I'm gonna make a public comment. So I'm gonna say thank you to our village staff for the Light the Night celebration this past Friday night, went very well. Outside of our police maybe having a little bit of some anxiety when the line got pretty long, it was very well received from the community and pretty much our staff did an amazing job of getting that done. And thank you to the Rotarians as well for allowing us to use the park and join with them in doing it. So that's my comment for the night. All right, that, any others? Don't see any. Perfect. All right. First item on our new business discussion and update regarding COVID-19 pandemic. Todd?
Um, I'll let Scott Russell from the EMS give a quick update from his perspective and what he's been hearing from the emergency management and Dane County calls. Then I've got some info to share regarding data, new data website that shows case progression and statistics in our area.
All right, thanks, Todd. Um, first of all, a few, a little bit of data from the county. There's now up to 29,123 confirmed cases in the county. And we did unfortunately bump up to 103 deaths. That's an addition of 41 from the last time they had any data out there. You do kind of have to be cautious with those numbers, though, because those are numbers coming in still from the beginning of November. So it doesn't really give a good snapshot of what, of what November looks like. You start out with the bad news. The good news is that things are starting to trend downward. It's something we've been waiting a long time to hear. We're hoping that that's a trend that continues for a while. We kind of hit the top of that bell curve, and now we're starting to slowly see the decrease. We're hoping that that continues. We're still looking to see what happens after this Thanksgiving holiday and all the numbers start to catch up. See if we have any negative effects from that or not. Excuse me. Um, other than that, things have been going pretty, pretty steady in the county statewide. We're no longer considered a top positive testing state in the country anymore, which is very good news, especially with the difficulties the state has had and put in statewide ordinances in place. So that is one more positive. I know locally here, we do still continue to see the very large numbers of respiratory style instances throughout our public and throughout our district. As far as any kind of best practices and advice out there, again, limit your, limit your group meetings. It's very tough to say around this time of year. I'm sure I'm not alone when I say Thanksgiving was pretty difficult, and I think Christmas is gonna be pretty difficult for everybody as well. But it is what it is. I think that it's probably the safest thing to do going forward is just continue to limit that exposure to each other. Again, keep washing your hands, wear your mask, maintain your social distancing. We keep saying it week in and week out. It's always gonna be the same thing. There are some rumors out there regarding vaccines. I'm sure you guys have all heard it. Um, there should be some final word by the end of the week as to the Pfizer vaccine. And whether that, that's getting approved, I will tell you that in the healthcare and public sector, we are expecting to have vaccines going into individuals by the end of the year. So we're really excited about that. It is a two-part vaccine, and it will be both Pfizer and Moderna. Um, probably by the end of the year, we'll be able to start seeing that in our healthcare providers and our very, very high rate, high at-risk individuals. It's gonna be a long process. They're estimating about a year before they get the whole public actually vaccinated. So we're still in this for a bit of a long haul. Um, other than that, that's really about all I have. I was gonna touch a little bit on the new data, but it sounds like Todd's gonna do that. Um, so Todd, I'll let you go ahead and.
Yeah, maybe we can kind of do that together. Let me, let me share my screen. I've sent out this link, and I will include it in, I will include it in the village's website as well. Okay, do you see the, the little map? Map showing up? Okay, so within this, you can go to different aspects of data regarding different, different categories of communities. So total number of counts, for example, if we wanted to see the village of Wannakee. Whoop, I spelled it wrong.
Should be easy. We're the only one in the world.
Well, that's interesting. I looked it up earlier today. No, the village of Wannakee is no longer, oh, I know the problem. Here we go. City, village, town. That'll help. Thanks, Scott. We're supposed to work on this together, buddy. Alright, here we go. So let's say we want to look at total count. There we go. So that, that'll jump us down and show us in Wannakee, 705 total cases since the 15th of March. You can pick the community. You can also pick the school district, for example. For those who don't know, the Wannakee School District is larger than the village itself. And I can tell that somebody in my house is playing video games. So oh, that's the average rate. You can also look up death rate and deaths. I can tell you in Wannakee, the total is five currently. Oh, hi, Doc. Doc is shaking, Doc Random is shaking his head. I'm telling you that that's what this data dashboard says, sir. This is the district boundary that shows total cases of 1,072. But, um, Bill, do you wanna, you're shaking your head. Do you have some comments about the data?
Well, I know that the death is more than five.
Okay.
I haven't read this data, but I can promise you that's not true.
To Todd, to jump in here to kind of expound on what Dr. Random's saying, this data, it's nice, but take it with a grain of salt. It's, it's behind. It's definitely not up to date. The most up-to-date information we're getting, again, is from the beginning of November. You can only imagine how long it takes to get up onto a website like this. So it is behind, um.
So in this, and this, this says it was updated 12/7, but this is reliant on the data that's delivered from the source to the organization putting this information out.
Correct.
So that's where the, that's where the gap, the leg is. So anyway, that's available. I will send out the link, but grain of salt to be taken. Speaking of the COVID issues, Bill, is there anything you'd like to share with us tonight?
I'm sure Scott already told you, it's, it's full on still. It's not maybe quite as intense as last week or the week before, but it's, it's very, very busy. And hopefully everybody's being very careful. Just for the next few, just a few next few weeks, I'm sure we talked a little bit about the, the vaccines coming. The vaccine has been used in other critters, and it works. So we're, this type of vaccine's been used. So we're really planning on success. So we're just hoping for everybody to stay away from it for a few more weeks.
All right, and thanks, thanks for everything you're doing at the hospital and clinic, Bill. So we have other members of village staff here. The chief is here, who's, and his staff has been dealing with some aspects regarding enforcement. Any questions for the rest of the staff team before we move on? We are updating our website regularly. Last, about weekly, we're, we're checking it. So we still keep that information fresh on the site. There's a banner that runs across the very top of the webs, webpage. Ever since this thing has started, that's a special alert and takes people straight to the, to our COVID update page.
Any other questions for board members, for Todd or Scott or Bill? And Bill, thank you for joining. I know that you've been very busy with your work life. So thank you for being on tonight. Okay, no questions. I don't see any hands up. So, okay, thank you, everybody, for reports. Appreciate it. All right, next we have discuss, take action on exceptional performance bonus for deputy village clerk. Todd, do you want to start?
Yeah, and Caitlin can jump in and join me here, too. Occasionally, staff go above and beyond normal duties in the course of their work. While we've seen interesting times here as of late, on top of that, we've had a deputy clerk in Lori Health step up in, in really impressive ways to, to make the election season go as well as it did. And over the course of the past 12 months, she had a boss who was on maternity leave, and she stepped up to fill those shoes over, over that period of time. And, and, and that's continued now with, with, with COVID and, and her sort of being, being the, the person on call at village hall more than almost anyone else. So we're recommending a bonus, a 5% bonus for Lori Health. Caitlin, what would you like to add?
Um, I just wanted, I mean, the reason why I requested this of Todd is I just think I would like to recognize Lori for her dedication, leadership, her positive attitude, and her willingness to take on and go and be above and beyond, like Todd has said. I'm extremely proud of the work she's done this year, and I'm honored to have her as my deputy clerk. And I just really wanted to request this money to recognize her for going above and beyond in 2020.
Okay, thanks, Todd and Caitlin. Board members, any comments or questions for me, or them, I should say? Raise your hand, please, if you do. So I would just echo both what Todd and Caitlin have said. It's not just one election, but numerous things that have been happening with this election and this to smoothly execute our elections multiple times and keep everybody safe. Put everything in, plan, policy, everything. And Caitlin, you're to be credited, too. Don't, don't take this as a slight. I know you were fighting for this, for Lori. And I agreed with Todd and Caitlin when they asked to put this on the agenda, and if we could put this forward to you. So I am gonna make the motion to approve the $2,700 bonus for Lori Health.
Second.
I think Phil was the second there. A couple of hands went up. So we've got my motion and a second by Phil. Any other comments? Please raise your hand. Okay, seeing none, Caitlin, roll call vote, please.
Kristen Rungy?
Yes.
Phil Brandon?
Yes.
Chris Zellner?
Yes.
Phil Williams?
Yes.
Erin Moran?
Yes.
Gary Hertzberg?
Yes.
Nyla Frye?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. Motion passes.
Thank you for the support.
Okay, thank you, guys. Next, we have discuss and take action on quote for IT security improvements. Todd?
I disappeared, I disappeared too quick. And I'm probably gonna have Caitlin and Renee both help on this one as well. But you may recall several, quite a few months ago, I don't remember back when it was actually, but the board authorized us to engage a company called IT Strategies. Is that correct, Renee?
Yes, IT Strategies Group back in July.
Okay, to assist in kind of diving deeper into some of the backbone of our, of our IT structure and our systems, and provide recommendations to us on things that we should be attentive to within the design of our system. And we've worked together with Kevin, who is the consultant from, from IT Strategies, along with our current IT provider. Pat has helped along the way, too. And together, they, along with staff, have some recommendations. What we're presenting tonight is what I would call sort of the, the low-hanging fruit that we think is reasonable to be accomplished immediately for making a good, sound improvement to our overall IT system and our IT system's security. There's probably gonna be more that we'd like to bring forward over the course of the next couple of years, but those are gonna be bigger picture investment items that that will take some time for us to plan for and for us to budget for, frankly. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Renee and Caitlin, maybe to dive into more details of of what we're recommending today.
Um, yeah, I can, I can jump in. So so they have provided, as Todd said, sort of the immediate needs that we can tackle right away. Their quote is just over $19,000. But this is for a variety of things, including developing written IT policies and end-user training programs for all of our employees, improvements to our backup systems, the network security, some of the connectivity between the buildings, enhancing our password policies and managing some of our credentials in a better fashion. So so it's kind of a lot of things that we felt were more pressing needs. And as Todd said, things that we can get some bang for our buck by tackling these things now to, to finance it. So we have almost 6,700 really left over in our 2020 IT budget for things that either, you know, came in under budget or we didn't need it. Our focus this year was really a lot on COVID IT needs and making sure everybody couldn't work remotely effectively. And those were covered by the COVID grants. So we did not have to use all of our IT budget this year. And then there were also some items that are in this recommendation that we, our IT consultant had already put in the 2021 IT request. So those are already budgeted. So that leaves just over $7,000 that we would need to fund. And we are looking to use some of our credit card rebate to do that. We have still 18,000 unspent from our credit card rebate for this year, which is something we don't budget for as a revenue. So it's kind of a bonus revenue, and we try to use it for things that that benefit all departments across the village. And so we felt this was a good use of those funds. But we're happy to answer questions.
Yeah, Ed, there's nothing flashy that you're gonna, there's no shiny robot that's gonna start, start doing some magic work for us, but we do, we do feel, we're not, we wouldn't be recommending this now if we didn't feel like it was a really important step for us in our IT systems.
Board members, any comments or questions? Nyla?
Um.
You muted yourself, Nyla?
Um, what I'm wondering is, I've heard of municipalities being hacked, and then they want them to pay a ransom or whatever. Is this something that helps defray from that? Or what exactly do these things accomplish? This IT improvement, what does it accomplish?
You just hit one of, one of several nails on the head there, Nyla. That's a very real threat to communities right here in our backyard, practically in the state of Wisconsin. We've seen those, we've seen those IT ransom type scenarios. And across the country, there's some really scary stories. So that's part of the deep dive that we did in reviewing our system. And some of these improvements will directly improve our security in regards to those threats.
Thank you.
Other board members, raise your hands, please, if you have a comment or question. Okay, I, I mean, my only comment with this is that obviously with today's world, if you're plugged into the internet, you have the potential for being hacked. And the more you can do to prevent or make it more difficult for somebody to do that, or some group to do that, I think the better off you're gonna be. And so taking the proper steps, and all of you who are in business or any other telecommunications, Dr. Random in healthcare, everybody's information is out there. And it's, it needs to be protected, and we're no different as a government entity. A lot of potential liabilities there. We need to make sure we're, we're doing all that we can.
And today, today was a good example, wasn't it, Chris?
Yeah, somebody, I guess my email was hacked today, and a couple of you received emails from me.
Well, you weren't, you weren't hacked. You were actually spoofed. That's a, that's a play where people masquerade as someone that the organization may know. I, I and others maybe got an email from Chris asking to do him a favor. Can you please email me? I want your help to do me a favor. Well, that's usually never, never true. I quick emailed Chris. I said, is this legit? He said, no. And I deleted it, and we've since taken steps to block that, you know, that email string. So, so it's a very real ongoing situation.
So for, for the community out there, if it comes from an email from somebody that you've not seen that email from them before, you want to question it. That's really what it was. It wasn't my email that it came from. But still, those are the kinds of things that we're trying to avoid and, and keep safe. Gary, go ahead.
Yeah, I'd make a motion to approve the expenditure for network security.
Okay, we've got a motion. Aaron, Aaron is our second. Any other comments? Call the question. Caitlin, go ahead.
Phil Brandon?
Yes.
Chris Zellner?
Yes.
Phil Williams?
Yes.
Erin Moran?
Yes.
Gary Hertzberg?
Yes.
Nyla Frye?
Yes.
Kristen Rungy?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, thank you, Caitlin. Next, we have discuss and take action on two certified survey maps to adjust internal lot lines of lots 54 through 59 and Outlet 7 Heritage Hills subdivision. Kevin, are you taking this one?
Yes.
I have assumed that because you popped on screen.
Okay, yes. And here's, here's the cover sheet, and this has already been recommended for approval by the Plan Commission. It's really considered almost gonna be considered administrative. There are some small changes to the lots. And let me just show you the, the two different CSMs. There are seven of them. Six of them are residential units. The last, the last lot is an outlot. But as you can see, the, the, the adjustment is like from two feet up to like seven feet going on to the, to the next one. Very small adjustments, but I think what it does, it allows them to fit their model homes on these particular lots better. Like I said, Plan Commission record approval, the only recommendation I would make is that we want to make sure we get our easements in the correct spots. And Tim Merlitzky is looking at that. So my recommendation was to approve it subject to the satisfaction of the village engineer and approval by the utility manager.
Okay, board members, any questions for Kevin on this topic or look for a motion?
Yeah, that is pretty much bookkeeping. We looked at that, and I make a motion. We approve the certified survey map subject to the satisfaction of the village engineer and approval by the utility manager.
Second.
The motion by Phil and second by Kristen Rungy. Any other comments? Raise your hand. Seeing none, roll call Caitlin?
Chris Zellner?
Yes.
Phil Williams?
Yes.
Erin Moran?
Yes.
Gary Hertzberg?
Yes.
Nyla Frye?
Yes.
Kristen Rungy?
Yes.
Phil Brandon?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have discuss and take action on racism, tolerance, and equality in the Wannakee community. Todd, any updates?
Yes, and I've got Tim Shell from the school district and Lisa Humenech from WNC, because together we've been working on a project that we hope is gonna be really engaging across boundaries and within our community. So if you, if you saw the packet, I'm just gonna jump down to my memo here quick, too. My packet included a one-page proposal. My packet included a one page proposal from a couple of experts in the area who've been working in. In this space within the Dane County community for quite a few years, Percy Brown and Rainey Briggs. In fact, Tim Shell has some direct experience in working with them through his interactions at the. In the education sphere. So. But what we are suggesting is engaging in a community learning project. And in your packet, I included some little snippets from the, in our case, the resolution that the board passed. A few months ago relating to racism in our community, similar to the school district and then a statement from the strategic plan for WNC. All of which. Basically says we are all desiring the same thing as organizations within our community. So what we're hoping to do with this work is align together to help our community grow and learn. And so this is, this is going to involve a, it's going to involve two, hopefully at least two hundred members of our community. And I think on the face of it, someone might call a book club, but quite honestly, it's much more than that. It's not just another book club. Because frankly, we've really never done a community wide study like this before. This is a community learning opportunity. And I, I think before diving way deep, I kind of like to turn it over to Tim, who knows more intimately about what this journey is going to be like. Tim, could you give us a snapshot on what what people might expect?
Thank you, Todd. First of all, I want to start by saying it's really exciting that we have the opportunity. For all of the different partners in this proposed project to collaborate on this. I think. The topic's worthy of that collaboration and I think with the United effort, we can really have a broader discussion and bring more people into that discussion in our community. As Todd alluded to, I did participate in, in a very similar activity with the same text, also facilitated. By Percy and Randy this summer. In Dane County, we have a coalition of schools and actually in the last year, it started to extend. Beyond Dane County, it's called the Dane County Equity Consortium and it's really. Focusing all of the school districts in our county on topics of equity, diversity and inclusion. And so. We did, this is a summer activity. It was extremely positive. This is, you know, something that I can personally assure you that. The two facilitators we're proposing have an excellent background in this and a proven track record of success. And as Todd said, it's easy to look at this as a book study and certainly it's, it's certainly a book that will. Make you think and and cause you to look at some things differently. But the key role the text plays in the proposal is this, the springboard to bigger discussions. A lot of time will be spent with other members of the community in smaller breakout groups. So even though we are hoping for an overall participation of two hundred of our fellow citizens in the community. The actual conversations will be occurring in much smaller and more manageable and more personable groups. And each will have a its own facilitator and those facilitators will in turn work with Percy and Randy. On the overall success of the learning project.
Thanks, Tim. I would, I would add that Tim has engaged the diversity committee. That the school is coordinated in the discussion about what we're hoping to do and they've endorsed this work. And the school has agreed to participate in funding this work together with the village. Altogether, it's a fifteen thousand dollar project. Our proposal is that the school district chip in five, the village chip in five. And then Lisa from WNC is working on grant programs that will fill in the rest of the funding. That funding will be used to, to pay the facilitators as well as purchase all the books. One of our goals, and I go back to a conversation I have with Lisa a few weeks ago, is. That it can be really different, difficult to engage, engage the community in this type of discussion. And what we hope to do is remove barriers to entry. So we're looking to provide the texts as well as fun, so no cost to those who are participating, except a commitment. That they'll stick with it for the, for the six weeks and commit to diving into the, into the learning process. But Lisa, let me kick it to you. Do you want to talk about how we hope to roll this out?
Sure. So we have discussed a number of leadership teams within the community that we definitely want to invite to participate in this. And we're hoping that the organizations that they help lead will support that and have encouraged them to be a part of it. So, but we're also going to open it up to the community as a whole. But one of the key things is that in the sixth session, the final session, we develop an action plan. And part of that will be sort of personal action plan with what we will hope to do. On our own to make a difference in the community, but then also what can we do together to improve the situation in the community? And so by bringing those leadership teams into this discussion, hopefully we've got all the people there who can really then move the action plan forward. And we're also hoping for a number of really powerful collaborations to come up because of the conversations and the trust building. And relationship building that's going to happen within those discussion groups.
Thanks, Lisa. So I'm really, I'm actually really proud of the village board for including in your twenty twenty one budget dedicated funding. To our diversity, equity and inclusion work. And the funding is sufficient to cover our portion of the project. So there really isn't a funding component that you need to approve. But Tim and Lisa and I are hoping that you would give, take action to endorse the project as we, have we, as we have presented it. And then we will, we will move forward to bring this to our community.
Okay, board members, any comments or questions? Nyla, go ahead.
No, I don't have a question. I just wanted to make the motion.
Okay, that's fine. You can do that.
I, I moved to endorse the community learning project.
Okay, motion by Nyla Fry. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
I'm actually going to give it to Gary Hertzberg. He had his hand up first, Phil. So I'm going to go ahead to Gary Hertzberg with the second. Any other comments from board members? Okay, seeing none, I will call the question. Caitlin, roll call vote.
Phil Williams.
Yes.
Erin Moran.
Yes, absolutely.
Gary Hertzberg.
Yes.
Nyla Fry.
Yes.
Kristen Rongy.
Yes.
Bill Random.
Yes.
Chris Selner.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, everyone. Thanks, Tim and Lisa.
Thank you. Have a great night. Okay, next we have discuss and take action on conceptual development agreement and TIF assistance requests for octopi expansion. Todd, we're going into closed session, correct? You want to give any background first?
Well, this, certainly there's been a lot of discussion in the community about the recently created TIF district amendment for tid nine. That it essentially is providing the mechanism by which the village could consider approving a development agreement. To provide assistance for the act by project. I do have Frank Roman and Todd Taves here from Ellers and Brian, the village attorney, who is assisting us with drafting the agreement. What we're discussing today is actually the terms of this development agreement, the, the, the financial terms. And that's a subject that the state allows communities, community boards like ours to discuss in closed session. Because essentially it's a bargaining process. We're discussing. The pros and cons of, of, of a financial approach and how best to protect the village in that process. So that's, that's why we're afforded the opportunity to go into closed session. Before we do, are there any other subjects related to this project besides the financial component, the incentive component? That any board members would like to ask in open session of Brian, Todd or Frank or myself?
If so, please raise your hand. Okay, seeing none, do I read my article thing first or do we take roll call first?
Yeah, why don't, why don't you read that and then take action and then I will give the instructions for what we'll do to go to the closed session.
Perfect, perfect. The village board may convene in closed session as authorized by Wisconsin statute nineteen point eight five one E. For the purpose of deliberating or negotiating the investing of public funds or conducting other specified public business. Whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session, the village board may reconvene in open session. And discuss and take action on the subject matter discussed in closed session. So I would look for a motion to go into closed session. Motion by Bill Random to go into closed second. Close session. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Gary Hertzberg. Caitlin, roll call vote, please.
Erin Moran.
Yes.
Gary Hertzberg.
Yes.
Nyla Fry.
Yes.
Kristen Rongy.
Yes.
Bill Random.
Yes.
Chris Selner.
Yes.
Phil Williams.
Yes.
Motion passes your unclosed session.
Okay, I will, for the public still watching, I will let you know that we're not expecting action in open session. Typically, the way this works is we negotiate the financial aspect of a proposal. Then that proposal is discussed with the, the requister, the requesting party, in this case, octopi. And then we have a subsequent board meeting, in this case, either in a couple of weeks or next month. To consider the finalized terms, at which point those terms would be made public. So that is the process that we'd be undertaking tonight and I don't expect action in open session. But we will return to open session regardless to conclude the meeting. So with that said, the village board members and participants in the meeting have all been sent an additional Zoom link. For a closed session Zoom meeting. So what you'll do when I'm done chatting here is you'll actually log out of this meeting. I'll be the only one remaining. I'll be actually logging into our meeting on my phone. But I'll remain on here. I'll go to the screen that says we're in closed session and I will return when it's completed. Then when we're done with the closed session, we'll leave that meeting and you'll log back into the link that got you into this initial meeting. Any questions on that for process? All right, we'll see you there soon then.
Okay, this is your friendly wake up call to those of you who are still here as attendees. Congratulations, but we'll be coming back into open session here in just a moment. Once the rest of the board members join us.
Move to adjourn.
Bill, I know you've had a long day. Yeah, Nyla. Oh, I can't, I can't hear you. You're still on mute.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay, there was something on the agenda pertaining to the zoning and it brought up that somebody wanted to continue having chickens. And it was brought up that we may want to take that to joint planning commission. Did you see that in the packet? And I was wondering, are we going to leave that hanging or do we need to leave that hanging? Or can it be brought back at some other point?
I think that was the Westport.
Right.
That's on this agenda?
Yes.
That was in Westport.
It wasn't on the agenda, but it was to do with dividing a parcel and the couple wanted to keep their chickens.
Yeah, that was Westport has to decide that. That's Westports.
Westport decides that and our joint planning commission doesn't have anything to do with that? I mean, we don't.
I think that was from Westports. I read that too, Nyla. And it looks like it's from Westports at their meeting. They had come up with that. So they sent us the whole information, not just related to that single dividing. They put that, that was in their notes.
Okay.
I read it too.
Thanks for the clar-
All right, give me a moment. I'm gonna, I've got to send a, send a quick invite to our village president.
For the record, I would like chickens in my backyard.
Not on the agenda.
Should we make a limit of like 25 or so?
I'd like one on my table.
Back when I lived on woodland, I really wanted chickens.
I keep all my chickens at the Piggly Wiggly.
I raise 250 chickens. That's not true, there's some at the Culvers.
I, I would, I would suggest if, if I let Brian go too early, he would tell you to stop discussing the item as it's not on the agenda. All right, Chris and I are kind of going back and forth here. Hopefully, he, hopefully he joins us here.
Nice sleep, Bill.
Yeah, it's, it's today, this week's gonna be better. This week's gonna be better.
Boy. I can't believe how those people work the hours. They gotta be working. That's gotta be a emotional.
Yeah, they're getting, different nurses are getting trained for different units right now all the time.
Did you hear how Lisa's first day went?
Oh, she had a blast. She got an ID badge, she's somebody now.
Here comes Chris.
Bill Random, in your honor. Move to adjourn.
Second.
Listened by Bill Random. I think- Bill, we'll get Phil in a second. Caitlin, roll call vote, please.
Nyla Frye. Yes. Kristen Rungy.
Yes.
Bill Random. Chris Selner.